County Council Work Session to Order. First item on the agenda is to review and discussion of proposal revision to the Land Development Regulations of Newberry County, codified in Chapter 154 of the Code of Ordinance of Newberry County. We'll turn it over to Mr. Shakur.
Well, good evening. I hope you all are doing well, and thank you for coming back after having done this last week. I thought, you know, we might have some absences. Appreciate you all doing that.
No, that was some ops.
We were very careful how we handled that.
Absences make the work a little fun.
I noticed on those invites today, someone said optional.
Yeah, that's right.
Except for Jeff's had to come.
Y'all can work that out between you, as long as we have four people here, you know, to keep things moving. Well, you know, we started this process of going over the land development regulations, and, you know, Katie did a great job on this, and of course she had some help from Cheryl Matheny, who, you know, we use on planning and zoning, and in this case, development standard projects. But it doesn't change the fact that it's a dry read, and so, you know, maybe I haven't done quite what we could do to kind of liven it up a little bit, but, you know, I'll try to at least keep it just kind of plain language. I think we made pretty good progress last week, and have a little bit of work to get done today. The goal would be is if we could complete the review today, and then any issues, I know that Carl had asked a question and asked us to kind of further explore, you know, this sort of end around on subdivisions and not going through the process. But if there are any other issues like that, what we'd like to try to do is take advantage of the two weeks we have between this meeting and our next one to get those issues addressed for you, so that we could proceed with first reading at the February 5th meeting. So that's kind of the goal. And like we talked last week, you just kind of hundred foot, hundred thousand foot level view, the land development regulations, like zoning, are the two primary tools that we use to implement the comprehensive plan that y'all have adopted. And, you know, we went through that process that culminated with the adoption of the entire plan at the beginning of last year, so pretty much this time last year is when we adopted it. It's what we want to be in the future, what we want to be when we grow up, and this is one of the tools that enables us to achieve that vision that y'all have established. So kind of where we left off was Section 30, and I believe that that is on page 15. Okay, page 15. And this were the requirements for submission and review of final plats for major subdivisions. So like we talked about, we've got two types of subdivisions, minor and major. Minor are going to be anything less than five lots and/or any subdivision under that threshold that also does not involve like the construction of new roads or drainage. Because in some cases, we could have a subdivision that's less than five lots, but has that type of infrastructure that's being constructed, and we would classify it as major. And then there's basically four types of plats that are submitted. The first is really like a sketch drawing. That is required for a major subdivision, it is not required for a minor. Then there's preliminary plat, and you'll notice when we look at the table here a little bit, there are a lot of elements to the preliminary plat, and that's where you find all the studies, like traffic studies, and, you know, are jurisdictional wetlands of Army Corps of Engineers impacted, you know, those kinds of things are addressed in the attachments to the preliminary plat. The next step is in the final plat, and that's where we're at now. And there's two kinds of final plats. One is where everything that the Planning Commission required has been done, and then the plat's recorded. Of course, Katie has to review and certify that that has happened. The other type is where the developer has not completed the construction of improvements, but we're willing to allow them not to, but provide a financial guarantee. We're not required to do that, but in cases where we're comfortable with doing that, and the guarantee meets council's requirements, which is in this ordinance, then we can accept that. And the whole idea there is you estimate the cost of the improvements, and 150% of that has to be furnished in the form of a guarantee that we have ready access to if we ever have to pull the trigger on building the improvements ourselves. And that's basically the four types of plats we have. So right now, what we're in is the submission and review of final plats, and so you'll see that, you know, application, this is in subsection A, applications made to Katie. The developer submits four hard copies and one digital copy. You know, PDF has really become very stable and ubiquitous, you know, there was a time where there was some concern about PDF and the longevity of it, but it's established itself as a kind of a standard, really, so you'll notice that in the ordinance throughout it. Katie has to determine, hey, is the final plat, does it match up with the preliminary plat that the Planning Commission approved? And in some cases, like we talked about last week, the Planning Commission approves a plat with conditions, and then so she has to also confirm, hey, if there were any modifications that the Planning Commission required, those modifications need to be reflected in the final plat, and it's got to match up with the preliminary plant. If there are any substantial deviations, kind of like when y'all adopt something by ordinance, it has to come back to you to be amended, it goes back to the Planning Commission, because what the Planning Commission approved can only be changed by the Planning Commission. So it's kind of the same concept. The installation of improvements, oops, is the next section, and we have to confirm that, you know, all the required site improvements, because there may be site improvements that we did, the Planning Commission did not require, but those that are required, they got to be installed to our satisfaction. And the two major players in terms of determining that are Katie and our Public Works Director, of course, who is Josh Rowe, and they do that. If it's not, then like we just talked about, then the developer- have the ability to use one of our consulting engineers to do this, but by and large, it's going to be reviewed by Katie and by Josh to make sure that the, everything's included and that the estimate of cost for each item is reasonable. And, you know, they're able to do that because of their past experience and knowledge with similar projects, so they can just draw on that experience to, you know, ensure that those cost estimates are accurate. And again, if there are any concerns, we can use one of our consulting engineers to do that. The plat, just like the final plat, the bonded plat, it has to conform to the preliminary plat. If it doesn't, and Katie determines that, it's got to go to the planning commission to be changed. There's only a few instances where she has some discretion to allow deviations, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but they're minor. This is anything that is of substance or substantial, it's got to go back to the planning commission, a lot like the items with y'all. The developer, before we'll approve the plat, we've got to have the financial guarantee posted. It's going to have to name us as the payee. It's got to secure the cost of construction, and it has to be with a bank in Newberry County. So we have to have, and we got to have ready access to that financial guarantee to where we can pull the trigger on it, get the money we need, and build the improvements. The bonded final plat has to be acted on by the planning commission, just like a final plat. And then, and that would be at their next regular meeting, and again, they meet on Thursday, third Tuesdays. Following that meeting, Katie has 15 days to notify, just like with the final plat, to notify the applicant of the commission's decision. Then, once approved, she just notes the approval on each copy of the bonded final plat, and it's recorded at the courthouse. And then at that point, once it's recorded, the sale of individual lots can start, not until it's recorded. Now, one of the things that's required with the bonded final plat is that Katie needs to receive regular updates on the status of the improvements from the developer, and that would be for the period covered by the bond. And then when you get 30 days out from the expiration of the bond, there's a notice requirement where Katie gives us a heads up, so we know what's going on, and Josh. And then the developer has to either complete the improvements, or they've got to request an extension, and the guarantee would have to be extended. So it would be granting them an extension for additional time to build everything they're required to build per the planning commission's approval, and there's a requirement that the guarantee would have to be extended, so that it still exists and that we can liquidate it if we need to, to build the improvements. Once the installation of improvements is completed, the developer has to notify Katie, and then Katie and Josh would go inspect the site. And again, they can call on a consulting engineer if they feel like that's necessary, or really any professional we think that we might need, but by and large, they'd be capable of doing that themselves. And then once they're satisfied after the inspection, we'd release the financial guarantee. Because in some cases, they're actually posting a bond of money, you know, that we're depositing. And, you know, what we've been doing, at least on the roads here lately, is we put that in the local government investment pool that the state treasurer's office maintains, because the yields have just been so high, that it's been about 5.5% to 5.6%. So, you know, we want to make sure their money and our money is working. So denials are just like with the final plat. You know, Katie would just prepare a written notice, and she'd explain the reasons why, and she'd have to deliver it within five days of that decision. And then the appeals process, it's the exact same. You know, it's planning commission first, and then if the party is still, an interested party's still aggrieved, to circuit court. Okay, so in terms of, and this is section 32, what financial guarantees must be, they've got to be in a form that's acceptable to us, they got to be issued by an issuer that's licensed by the state of South Carolina. We're not going to accept financial guarantees for private ingress, egress easements or private right of ways. The developer must already have those secured. We reserve the right to refuse security, so instead, we could require that they construct the improvements like they originally agreed to. We've got to, when we accept financial guarantee, the security must empower us to draw on the funds, and that's our decision. It's not like both parties agree. If we feel like, hey, it's time, then we draw on the funds and begin constructing the improvements. Like I mentioned, the amount of the guarantee has to be 150% or more of the estimated cost that we agree to for the improvements. And then, like I said a minute ago, you know, the institution with providing the guarantee would have to be located in Newberry County. And then, you know, if they don't meet their timelines, and there's no extension that's granted, both on the time to build the improvements and the guarantee that is securing the fact that those improvements haven't been met yet, then we can complete the improvements by just, you know, accessing the guarantee and using that to fund them. Now, they had the ability to request two reductions. You can imagine, as they're constructing the improvements, then the gap basically between what's been constructed and what hadn't narrows, and so the cost is reduced as well. And they can come to us and ask to reduce the guarantee twice over the life of the guarantee period. And then what happens is those go to county administration for approval. And then we have some discretion, obviously, when it comes to approving that. Okay, so section 33, this involves recording final plats. No plat gets recorded unless it's been stamped and signed by Katie. And then the subdivider is responsible for filing and paying all of the filing fees at the courthouse, so that would be their responsibility. In terms of long-term maintenance and performance, there is some certifications that must be filed by the subdivider, so, you know, there's a written certification that the improvements have been completed in accordance with the plat and the drawings and any specifications that supported the plat and drawings, and then also that it complies with this ordinance, chapter 154 and chapter 91, which is the road ordinance that council approved. That was at the last meeting? Yeah, the last meeting. It was third reading. Now, in terms of the road and drainage, you know, we already have this now. Once those are completed and we agree to accept them, then the developer has to warranty them for two years. And we would hold, like I mentioned, in, I think, every case that, in at least the short time I've been here, last couple of years, we've had those funds on deposit, and we've just put them in LGIP. And then, you know, once we certify that, once we get through the warranty period and there are no material defects with the road, then we release the money to the developer. The amount of the financial guarantee must be at least 20% of the cost to complete the road and drainage improvements, the estimated cost. And then we've got to have the ability to access those funds at our discretion when we feel it's necessary to correct some kind of a defect with the drainage or the roads. Okay, I mentioned that Katie has a little bit of latitude in terms of approving revisions, because you can imagine with some of these projects, you know, they're complicated, and then also sometimes they're fairly drawn out, depending on their size, and sometimes revisions are necessary. In most cases, almost all cases, it goes back to the planning commission for approval, but there's some exceptions, and these are in section 35, development revisions. And so during development, there are some revisions that Katie can approve to the final plat, and these are very minor. And some examples of those are like a shift in interior light lines, that's something she could approve, as long as it doesn't involve a parcel within that development that's reserved for open space, recreation, or some form of right of way. So if it's like a line between lots that'll be privately owned, she would have the ability to approve some changes to those. Shifting or widening easements, I mean, that's something she'd have the ability to change, unless she, and in some cases, she may want to run it by the planning commission. You know, that would be a decision she would make. Sometimes the distances or bearings of property lines need to be corrected, so she could do that. There may be a change of land use. Of course, it has to be allowed under zoning, but that's something that she could approve. There could be some general information that needs to change, she could approve that. And then in some cases, the density is proposed to increase, and as long as it doesn't increase by more than 5% in terms of the total number of dwellings, Katie could approve that. If it's over 5%, it would have to go to the planning commission for approval, and anything not on that list, I just read y'all, has to go to the planning commission. And then, so that's it for article three. Any questions? Okay.
I've got one question.
Sure.
So you said they have to put down 20%, so they come to a point where they haven't finished it, and it's going to take more than 20% to complete the improvements needed. What do we do there, take them to court?
Well, okay, so in terms of construction, when it's like a bonded final plat, it's 150%.
Okay.
It's just during the warranty period, if there are defects on the road, it's already been built.
Okay, okay.
And so you take the cost to build the road, or it could be drainage, usually it's the road, like with pavement or a base issue, 20% of what it costs to build it is the amount of the guarantee.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, it wouldn't cost more than that, or we got...
Big reason.
Yeah. We probably have a road that maybe we shouldn't have accepted to begin with. Yeah. So hopefully, we can avoid that. But that was a good catch, though. It's just two different types of surety.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, basically in the same article of the ordinance. Any other questions? Okay. Well, article four, we're getting into survey and plat requirements, and, you know, you'll see that, you know, we provided this high-level kind of summary of the changes, and you'll notice that there are five categories of changes. I'm just going to run through, you've got that in front of you, I'm going to run through the actual ordinance. Section 38 provides that, you know, when you look at the state's code of regulations, they're pretty voluminous, and a lot of it falls under LLR, and there is a board that regulates surveying and surveyors in South Carolina, and they have like a standard practices manual, and basically, anything that is done under the LDR in terms of surveying has to comport with those standards that have been adopted by the state. So that's what section 38's saying. 39, now we're getting into these four different types of plats, and this is the first one. It's a sketch plat. It's not required for minor subdivisions. It is required for major subdivisions, and it's something that is reviewed by Katie. And you'll see that, you know, and she mentioned this in the summary, that we really reduce some of the requirements for the sketch. This is like our first interaction with them, and it's really an opportunity for us to identify potential problems and communicate that information to the developer, so they can incorporate it in the preliminary plat. And they get to ask us questions, and we get to ask them questions, and it's just good for the process. And so you see there that it's, there's not as, nearly as many elements or lines in those tables. By the way, I think those tables are really helpful, just in terms of comparing the four. But you can see that the requirements are, it's much less involved than the preliminary plat. Now, the preliminary plat requirement is in section 40, which is the next section. And you'll see that this is really kind of the workhorse of the process. You can see there's identification, information that has to be provided related to the subdivision, you know, what it's going to be called, and the names of the property owners and agents. There's, you know, location information that has to be provided, like a location map that just shows where in the county it is, and, you know, scale and north arrow and date, tax map numbers of the properties involved, the total acreage that'll be subdivided, and then also a seal of the land surveyor or engineer who prepared the survey. With the site information, all the boundaries have to be identified, structures, so this would be location and description, the exterior boundaries of the track would have to be shown, zoning classifications that apply, the setbacks in the zoning ordinance that apply have to be shown, land uses, and this would be not only the property that's being developed, but also adjacent properties, to give all the context. All the roadways would be shown, you know, streams, rivers, other watercourses, railroads, bridges, all that would have to be on there. And then in terms of site information, now we're getting into stuff that wasn't on the sketch. You know, the lots that would be created, the total dwellings, you know, where the interior light lines are located, the dimensions, the numbering, you know, is this going to be a subdivision that's phased? You would have to identify the phases on the preliminary plat. All the lots would have to be identified by size, so you would show the area. Easements would be shown, public areas, because, you know, under the ordinance, we've talked about different types of public areas, whether it's recreation or open space, some cases schools, those would have to be identified on there. You'll notice, too, that a traffic study is required. This would be if it connects with a county road or a state road. And so the standards that apply to those two, and they're provided in chapter 91 that y'all adopted at the last meeting, would be triggered, and a traffic study would be necessary. And then you can see there's a good bit in terms of plans. I mean, you've got stormwater plans, environmental plans related to flood, erosion and sedimentation control, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we don't have a mess on our hands that impacts other properties and waterways, utilities, plan for that. Water and sewer certification, so if it's a public provider, we want a certification from them that they can serve, and that they can serve and meet the demands of the subdivision as proposed. If it's not that, then it would be Department of Environmental Services, which, of course, used to be DHEC, certifying that, yes, wells can serve the property as proposed, and/or septic tanks and the property perks. So in some cases, landscaping is required. You know, when it's residential, landscaping is required for common areas in the entrance sign, but we'd want a landscape plan for those areas. And also, we would require that any restrictive covenants that are proposed, we want the information on those two. Okay, and I already mentioned water and sewer availability. They've also got, when the roads of the subdivision connect to a county road or a state road, or, you know, in some cases, now I'm trying to think, I can't think of an instance with a municipal road, except in a case where it's happening... would be location and description, the boundary, exterior boundaries of the track would have to be shown, zoning classifications that apply, the setbacks in the zoning ordinance that apply have to be shown, land uses, and this would be not only the property that's being developed, but also adjacent properties, to give all the context. All the roadways would be, would be shown, you know, streams, rivers, other watercourses, railroads, bridges, all that would have to be on there. And then in terms of site information, now we're getting into stuff that wasn't on the, on the sketch. You know, the lots that would be created, the total dwellings, you know, where the interior light lines are located, the dimensions, the numbering, you know, is this going to be a subdivision that's phased? You would have to identify the phases on the preliminary plat. All the, all the lots would have to be identified by size, so you would show the area. Easements would be shown, public areas, because you know, under the ordinance, we've talked about different types of public areas, whether it's recreation or open space, some cases schools. Those would have to be identified on there. You'll notice, too, that a traffic study is required. This would be if it connects with a county road or a state road. And so the standards that apply to those two, and they're provided in Chapter 91 that y'all adopted at the last meeting, would be triggered, and a traffic study would be necessary. And then you can see there's a good bit in terms of plans. I mean, you've got stormwater plans, environmental plans related to flood, erosion and sedimentation control, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we don't, we don't have a mess on our hands that impacts other properties and waterways, utilities, plan for that. Water and sewer certification, so if it's a public provider, we want a certification from them that they can serve, and that they can serve and meet the demands of the subdivision as proposed. If it's not that, then it would be Department of Environmental Services, which of course used to be DHEC, certifying that yes, wells can serve the property as proposed, and/or septic tanks and the property perks. In some cases, landscaping is required. You know, when it's residential, landscaping is required for common areas in the entrance sign, but we'd want a landscape plan for those areas. And also, we would require that any restrictive covenants that are proposed, we want the information on those two. Okay, and I already mentioned water and sewer availability. They've also got, when, when the roads of the subdivision connect to a county road or a state road, or, you know, in some cases, now I'm trying to think, I don't, can't think of an instance with a municipal road, except in a case where it's happening within municipal, the boundaries of a municipality that we administer this ordinance within, which, you know, we have seven in Newberry County. Newberry and Silver Street are the only two that don't fall under this ordinance. Newberry has its own. Silver Street just doesn't participate. I guess if you had a municipal road in those, one of those five municipalities, then it could be an encroachment permit issued by the municipality. But we want to see that, that this neighborhood can connect to the road system, and that's been permitted.
I didn't see it listed on there, but, because this has been brought up in the past, how do we handle when you have, we have a lot of cemeteries that are throughout the county on land, and now they want to develop it? How do we ensure we protect those grave sites?
Then the, the developer and/or the seller of the property, they could have the cemetery surveyed out and then protect it on its own, have it on its own parcel so that it's not affiliated with the actual subdivision. But if it's not, I mean, this developer would have to work around it, put it in green space, but nine times out of ten, the family of that grave site is going to survey it out so that they can have the rights to it.
Because I think I just saw something in the news where the developer went in, I think it was in Lancaster County, went in and they didn't, they didn't find anything, and then some people from the area thought, oh, there's, there's some, maybe some graves there. They may not be marked, but we want them protected. And actually, the, the planning board said that they found for the developer, so they did everything they could to try to find it, but then they turned up, they found like 17 graves, but it already got approved, so. I just, I know that in the past, there's been a couple of areas, they were looking at building houses, and actually, we had a, the county had a, didn't buy the property, but they had a right to buy it if they could. There were some graves there that we would have had to protect itself. I just, you know.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And of course, we don't know all of the cemeteries in the county, but we do have a map in GIS that could be referred to to try to identify those. Although I think the way the maps are put together, you don't, you can't necessarily tell which property it is. I think it's like a highway map, but, and that's actually on our website, too.
And I know that, um, the Dutch Fort Cenological Society, that's one of the projects they're working on, is a lot of, identifying all these different cemeteries and stuff in the county.
A lot of families, chairs out there that probably...
Yep.
And that, and that really would be a great layer to have in the GIS. I know Brian's got a lot of things he's working on, Brian Kelly, our GIS manager, but, you know, having a layer like that, that not only identifies the cemeteries, but also the proper parcel that they're on, could be, could be helpful in the future, you know, just for reference purposes.
And I know that came up recently with the I-26 work down there towards Chapin. Ended up having to move some more graves down there. Because the other families that were buried there close by, they had been moved back in the 50s down to Elmwood Cemetery. And then these two weren't in the, that right-of-way, but when they expanded out, they go to three lanes on each side, they had to move those two. So I guess they requested any family members or descendants in the area if they approved or not, but I don't know, I don't think they found any.
Yeah. No, that's a great point. Good questions, too. Any other? Okay. The, the final plat, like we were talking about, I mean, the preliminary plat, I mean, that's really where the rubber meets the road. You'll notice in the table for final plat, which is the table in green, that it's not as quite, not quite as involved. And you'll see a lot of the same elements in, that are required for preliminary plats or required for final plats. And then there's a, there's a dedication statement in there, and, you know, basically, what it says is that nothing in the dedication, maybe construed as implying that, you know, we've accepted roads or drainage or any easements, or that we have a duty to maintain those. You know, that would be something that council would act on, you know, would be nothing in the final plat approval that's recorded saying that, you know, that an inference can be made that we're, we're responsible. And then there's similar language, you know, when, when easements or rights of way are private, that protects the county purchasers and successors. And that's something that they would have to sign as a certification, the developer would. Okay, and then bonded final plats, it's really basically the, the same elements. The only added ones is you've got the engineer's cost estimate, which, like we mentioned, is itemized. Then reference to the cash bond, which again is 150% of the engineer's cost estimate that we've reviewed and, and agree with. And then, you know, all the other elements really are the same as a final plat. Section 43, y'all are probably familiar with this, but, you know, restrictive covenants is something that we have to keep an eye on when we approve subdivisions, but it is not something that we enforce when we issue building permits. And this is actually addressed in, in state law. And so there's a, there's some declarations related to restrictive covenants that the subdivider is responsible for, because we have to make sure that there are no covenants that are violated by the subdivision that's proposed before we approve it. Because if there are, then we've got a conflict, and that conflict has to be considered. And then, you know, sometimes it could happen that we could be put on notice of a restrictive covenant that's violated by a proposed subdivision, and then, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to research that. And then we could not issue subdivision approvals if we found there to be conflicts. But again, this doesn't apply to building permits. This only applies to the development of land, the subdivision of land.
Will they do those covenants, and they have restrictions, once it gets built and in place? Is the HOA for that subdivision in charge and enforcing it?
Yes.
Or is our zoning?
Nope.
We don't touch them.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. And, you know, sometimes we get into situations where, you know, a building permit is applied for, and it's in an existing development with an HOA, and kind of tying, kind of putting a bow on that, you know, we can't consider the HOA covenants. I mean, we, you know, it's simply a matter of, are the requirements in Newberry County met?
A good one is the points, their side setbacks are 10 feet, and I understand, so when we go out to measure it, we measure seven, but their HOA is 10, so it's up to the property owner or the HOA to enforce that 10-foot setback.
They can't go less than seven, they're...
They can't go less than seven for county purposes, but they're actually, the seven is in violation of the points, but we don't enforce theirs, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's the main one, right? Well, that's the, the main one where we have kind of...
Those issues.
So, so they couldn't go to the zoning and appeals board and try to get a reduction of the setback if their covenant says 10?
So, we see that a lot with the lake setback, and what happens is the HOA represented will actually come to the BCA meeting. If they've taken their plan, got approved by the points HOA or whatever subdivision, and they're good with it, then the board can grant it. And typically, that's just lake setback, usually not five or right-of-way.
Any, any other questions? All right, so I think we're in Article 5 now, and that's design standards and improvements. And of course, you know, we've really kind of boiled the ordinance down a bit because, you know, many of the standards and improvements relate to roads, and that's now addressed in Chapter 91, the road ordinance that y'all just adopted. So they're, they're still there, and they're actually more robust and better described now. They're just in another location, so. So these standards in the LDR are a minimum. I mean, we encourage, you know, higher standards, but we don't require them. We just require the standards in the LDR. And we, you know, all of our, in terms of general requirements, all subdivisions have to be consistent with any adopted plans for an area. Right now, we don't have area plans, so this would be the conference of plan. So anything that's proposed has to comply with it. You know, all streets that are part of a new subdivision has to connect to a street network. And then, you know, in terms of railroads, you get into a situation where you've got roads and railroad crossings that are adjacent to one another, and we just, you know, in some cases, may require that the subdivider arrange the pattern of the streets to provide for future grade separation between, you know, streets and railroad crossings. Sometimes you get into a situation where there's a subdivision that joins a highway or a major arterial road, like a federal-state highway, a major artery, and in those cases, we may require like a frontage road. And the frontage road would just be, you know, would provide safer access, ingress and egress with the subdivision. In terms of access roads, the number and some of the requirements vary based on the, on the type of development. So I guess the first type is multifamily residential development, and so those with between 100 and 200 dwellings, they have to have two separate access roads, mainly for access by county fire. But if all of the buildings are sprinkled, then only one access road is required. I mean, we would encourage the developer to do two, but only one would be required. If it's more than 200 units, they have to have two separate access roads, even if sprinklers, even if all the buildings are sprinkled, you know, to the code. In terms of the two access roads, when they're required, they've got to be spaced apart, and the distance has to be at least half the length of the maximum diagonal dimension of the property. And that kind of helps us determine, you know, we don't want them together, we want, we want spacing, you know, to promote safety and, and ready access to as much of the development as, as can be provided for. The other category of developments that have access requirements are one or two family residential. And so if they're 30 or more dwelling units, so this would be kind of like a standard neighborhood, they have to have two separate access roads. Now, you could have a situation, I guess, where, where those single-family homes are sprinkled, and if they are, then only one access would be required. Of course, we would encourage two, but one, only one would be required. And then the number of dwelling units accessed from a single access road cannot be increased unless the access road will connect with future development. So that's a, that's a limitation as well. And then we've got a similar requirement in terms of the spacing between the two access roads. It'd be half the length of that maximum diagonal dimension that's a straight line Okay, streets, which is Section 48. The plans for all streets, they've got to comply with Chapter 91 that y'all just adopted. And then that's prior to preliminary plat approval. They've got to demonstrate that. And the minimum requirements in that ordinance have to be met. The road names and addresses, they're subject to the requirements in Chapter 94 for streets and sidewalks, and of course, 911 plays a huge role in that. The, you know, an official map is the domain of the planning commission, that we have an adopted official map. And so the location and width of all streets has to conform with that official map. And then what we want to make sure of, too, is where you have existing streets, that they're continued, or they're projected out to, you know, have the network, street network be as efficient and effective as possible. So where the planning commission deems it necessary, dead-end streets must be provided with an approved temporary turnaround. The radius of that turnaround has to be 50 feet. Dead-end streets that are designed to be permanently closed at one end, they can't be longer than 2,000 feet in length without some form of intermediate turnaround. So if they put turnarounds in along the way, then they can't exceed 4,500 feet in total length. And then in no case can a temporary cul-de-sac serve as primary access to more than 40 dwelling units. We want to make sure in terms of intersections, which is subsection D, that not more than two streets intersect at a single point. We want streets to intersect at right angles. In some cases, though, we'll accept something less than a right angle, but it can't be less than 75 degrees, which is, you know, pretty close to right. Streets that intersect other streets, we want them to do that directly opposite to one another. If not, then they've got to be separated by 150 feet at the center line. So the jog would have to be at least 150 feet down the road that they're, they're intersecting with. All road signs have to be designed, installed, and maintained by the county unless, and I believe Councilman Fulmer brought this up with the road ordinance a month or so ago, unless an alternative design is reviewed and approved by the planning commission, in which case the responsibility would not lie with the county. All driveways that connecting to a public road have to comply with DOT regulations or Chapter 91 is applicable. And y'all will probably remember when we reviewed that late last year, we use DOT standards for our standards, so. And then, of course, those are going to have to be approved by the county, and more specifically by our public works director. And then, of course, DOT approves any driveway connecting to a state road. There's an encroachment process for that, so they, they would go to DOT for that approval. We do have provisions in the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, for gated subdivisions, because this, you know, we've got, at least one example of that comes to mind, we may have, have more than I'm not thinking of, in the county, and we may see more of that. But we won't allow gated subdivisions in any location where the planning commission determines that it interferes with roads or pedestrian access or some form of shared-use path. We don't want a gated community to be an obstacle to the public. Entrances have to be designed so that law enforcement, fire, and emergency services have access. And, and they've got to, there has to be written approval from all of those agencies prior to the approval of a gate. So they're all consulted with on the front end, they all have gates or, or access. And then the unmanned gates, if any of them are unmanned, they have to be equipped to where a Yelp from a siren would trigger the automatic opening of a gate. So that would be technology that would have to be installed, unless it's otherwise approved by the responding agencies. Then a keypad at the entry gate has to be programmed so that emergency personnel could use it to get into the gate as well, if there was like a failure with that automated system. And then, you know, they've got to have unfettered access. And then we need access, too, for our employees, it has to be reasonable. You know, we didn't use the term unfettered, but, you know, when we have other personnel that needs to enter a gated community, then they need to be accommodated, and it needs to be reasonable, as well as public utilities. Then there's just some requirements for the width of gates. There's limitations on overhead barriers, because we want to make sure that we can get all of our trucks and anything that would have height on it. 13 feet 6 inches is the lowest point dimension that we're using. So we've got some requirements for it. We want to make sure that, you know, gate houses and the gate itself are not in a right-of-way or in a required buffered area, buffer area under the zoning ordinance, so there would be some setback there. And then we also, you got to make sure that there's enough room for stacking, because, you know, you can have a slowdown in the gate in terms of people getting in, so there has to be sufficient room, and, you know, we don't have vehicles out in a, in a road, a public road. The other thing is there has to be some ability for somebody to turn around and get out of there if they don't have the code, or for whatever reason their access is rejected. So there's some language in there in terms of those standards. We wouldn't require sidewalks in a gated community, but if they are built and included in the plan, they've got to meet the ADA requirements. So this would be for slope, cross-slope width, and any other design requirements in the Americans with Disabilities Act. Section 49 gets into blocks. You know, we're talking about, you know, development blocks. And, you know, we want to make sure that the size and shape reflects the topography in, you know, any natural areas, soil conditions, you know, traffic, safety, you know, all of those things would be taken to account, into account when it's laid out. We don't want any blocks that are more than 2,000 feet in length. But then we don't want blocks that are shorter than 600 feet, so somewhere between 600 and 2,000 feet in length. And then blocks along arterial or collector streets, because in some cases, we're also talking about commercial property here, shall not be less than 1,000 feet in length. In general, blocks, you know, for residential purposes would be, have enough width to allow for two tiers of lots. That would be, with the exception of reverse frontage lots, and reverse frontage lots, And reverse frontage lots, again, are an example of a lot that fronts on two roads. You've got one in the back and one in the front. And so, you know, when we're talking about residential areas in these lots, we're really referencing the street in front of those lots. And then when we get into commercial and industrial areas, there's some other factors that are taken into account by Katie in terms of how the blocks are laid out for those. And again, you know, we're trying to come up with reasonable and safe approaches to You know, where we've got sort of longer blocks, you know, we talked about 600 to 2,000 feet, the planning commission has the ability to require pedestrian ways or crosswalks at midpoints, you know, to get through those areas in terms of, you know, pedestrian access. So that's another design standard in there. And I know we're getting close to time. Section 50, we get into lots here, and you can see the requirements for lots in terms of ingress and egress, you know, the size and the width and the shape. You know, the fact that they've got to meet the minimum area and dimensional requirements in the zoning district. You know, the fact that we want side lot lines to be at right angles, and then like if the road is curved, we would want the side lot lines to relate to that curve in the road, the radius. We've got some requirements in there for corner lots in terms of the sufficiency of their size and shape and meeting building setbacks and orientations to both streets. We also have language in there that remnant lots are prohibited. So if there's a little bit of property left, then the developer would have to come up with a plan where there isn't a remnant. It would have to attach to a lot of record or more than one lot of record. We've got some requirements related to driveways. You know, we want to make sure, you know, with a corner lot, you're typically dealing with two streets. We want to make sure the driveway is not, you know, too close to that intersection on either street. Then we've got a graphic there you'll see for reverse frontage lots. I've heard people call it double frontage lots, but, you know, I mentioned those a minute ago. When you get into subsection eight, we've got some requirements for flag lots. And this is, you know, where you have the flagpole, and then you've got the bulk of the property, which is the flag. And sometimes they'll kind of mirror one another. That's sort of how they nest the lots together. And we've got some examples of this on the lake, where, you know, you'll have a flag lot where they have very little frontage on the road, but then they have, you know, relative to that, pretty significant frontage on the lake. And then a lot of times there'll be almost like a reverse image of that with a lot that's beside it. And so we just want to make sure that, you know, the flags aren't too long and that the flag's wide enough. And we want to make sure that, you know, that the driveways meet all DOT regulations in terms of connecting with a public road, whether it's municipal, county, or state. And you'll see all the dimensional requirements in there for flag lots. Landlocked parcels are something that, you know, these would be lots that don't have access to a public street, but otherwise meet the requirements of our ordinance. They can be developed and used, you know, if it's a permissible activity, but there's some requirements that have to be met. And specifically, there are three. One is that an access easement has been obtained, and it's got to be in the form of a binding agreement that's approved by the county, and it has to be recorded over Beth's office at the courthouse. It's got to be at least 20 feet in width, and it cannot be vacated, you know, so that easement cannot be dissolved or done away with unless it's approved by Katie in her A landlocked parcel can't be subdivided, so once it's established, it can't be subdivided. And then you've got to display the address prominently at the road that ingress and egress is provided from or to, so that we, you know, emergency services can find it. And I'd love to keep going. I'm sure y'all would prefer that I didn't. So you'll get your wish on that, because we've only got like 10 minutes left.
We're running short.
I really hope we can finish this.
Don't look like we're going to have time to finish it all.
Yeah, I don't think we will.
Unfortunately.
So if we want to try to pick this up, I know we've got the, you know, the audit presentation next time. Would y'all want us to provide you any kind of like written summary that is briefer than this, that would just kind of break it down, maybe in bullets?
Yeah.
I think that would be adequate.
Would that be good?
Yeah, because we got through the bulk of it.
Okay, all right. Well, that works for us too.
We got the information. If we got any questions.
Yeah. The public will probably appreciate that too. So what we can do is we can pick up with section 51 easements and give y'all a breakdown of that. And then if you just see anything in there, you may want to kind of cross-reference it, look at it, and then look at the ordinance if you have any questions about the details. Just let us know so that we can prepare that information for y'all. And hopefully, taking that approach, we could still be on schedule to do first reading on the 5th.
That's another one.
Yeah, that's planned. Hey, thank y'all so much.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the 5 o'clock meeting? Second. All in question, discussion. All in favor?
Yeah.
It's up to hour 6 o'clock. I'd like to go ahead and call the 6 o'clock meeting, Newberry County Council, to order. And in Councilman Johnson's absence, he regrets not being here, but he's not going to be able to make it. I've asked Reverend Skur if he'll lead us in invocation and pledge.
May we all stand in place. In our Father and our God, we all thank you for today's life, and God, we're begging on God to bless where we are we here, and where we need building, God, build us up in all we place in our life. We thank you now, and sweetly on Jesus Christ, we all say together, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to see all of you out here tonight on this cold night. It's going to get colder, unfortunately, it looks like. Item number one on our agenda is additions and deletions. Do we have any additions and deletions? Any adoption of the agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the agenda? Motion by Mr. Councilman Smith, second by Reverend Skur. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two is our favorite time of the meeting, of our meetings, the recognitions. We have some employee service awards, and looks like possibly some retirements or something. I'm not sure. Not fair. I'm told West has not fair, but we're going to turn it over to Mr. Shaker.
Thank you, sir.
Right.
Appreciate this chairman, members of council. Evening, everybody. Appreciate everyone coming this evening. Like Chairman Shealy mentioned, this is, I think, all of our favorite time of the meeting, because it's an opportunity for us to recognize our most valuable asset, which is our employees here at the county. We have close to 200 of them, and they work in a variety of locations doing a variety of things. We just appreciate them greatly. And so our first recognition this evening, he was unable to join us, Adam Tesnier. He is a member of the sheriff's department, and I will tell on Adam a little bit, he was actually at last meeting.
Yeah.
We created a little confusion on that. He showed up, and it would have been wonderful to have recognized him last Wednesday evening, because he did make it this evening sick. But I do want to tell you a little bit of value. Adam's been with us now for five years, but he actually started at the county. He's got five years of service. He started with the county in 2009, and he came in as a corrections officer. He worked a short time with us. Oftentimes, corrections can be a springboard to law enforcement, you know, like a patrol deputy or investigator position. And he had an opportunity to go work with another law enforcement agency and left us, which was not good for Newberry County. But then he came back in 2020, and has been with us since. When he came back, he came to us as a patrol deputy, as would have been in 2020. And a year later, he was promoted to his current position of school resource officer. School resource officers are incredibly important to our county and to our schools, to our students, our faculty and staff. They keep those schools safe. They build relationships. They create a bridge between our youth and law enforcement. You can't underscore enough how important they are. And Adam is like a few of our other various SROs. He not only is a public safety presence in our school, he is actively engaged with our schools to the point where he is the middle school basketball coach at McCarroll High School, I'm sorry, at McCarroll Middle School. He does a terrific job. And, you know, it's his qualities and the connection that he has with the folks in that school that make him so special. So he would just join me in him around our talk. And that's for Adam and for all of our SROs. Our next recognition, this is a 10-year service recognition, is Ms. Ashley Dentz. And you're joining us. That's why I was scared.
I don't know how this is going to be.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, thank you for joining us this evening. It's a pleasure to recognize you for 10 years of service. You've been with the county now for 10 years. You came to work under the umbrella of the sheriff's office at the detention center. And your role there is that you are the transport officer. And you get pulled in about every, which way you can be pulled in, north, south, east, west, and everything in between, because you provide transports to various appointments that our inmates have, whether it's hearings, core appearances, medical appointments. Sometimes they have work duty that they're on or littoral control, and you make sure that they get there safely and on time. And so we really appreciate that. I know that Sheriff Foster, the management team at the sheriff's office, and particularly Captain Daniel Floyd at the detention center, really appreciate you, as do your peers. And that's why it's just a pleasure for me this evening to recognize you on behalf of county council, but then also our management team. We've got several members, Karen Berman, our deputy administrators here, members of the sheriff's department. We just thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much.
So we can have it. Is your answer, I'll tell you what?
I don't know.
There you go. Our next recognition, and she unfortunately couldn't be here either, and I think when I start talking about what she does, you'll understand. Our next recognition, and she unfortunately couldn't be here either, and I think when I start talking about what she does, you'll understand. Our next recognition is a 20-year service recognition for Leslie Glass. And Leslie is our Director of Animal Care and Control. So, you know, the facility she runs is The Animal Shelter. It's out on Highway 34 as you're heading out towards Wentzboro. She has a 24-by-7 job responding to calls for service related to animals. And so, you know, with the limited staff that we have in that department, call rotates pretty frequently. And when you're on call, you also are responsible for feeding and watering the animals, which is work that's done on the weekends. During the weekend can be done during the workday. It's just incredibly important, the position. And you can imagine, it may only be a runner-up to working in recreation where you're dealing with parents and their children. Obviously, parents are very protective of their children. You know, likewise, people are very protective and have strong feelings about animals. And so, you know, we not only try to enforce the ordinances of the county, but we try to be compassionate. And Leslie does that. You know, not only does she operate the shelter and make sure that those animals are well cared for, that are in her custody, she also tries to connect people with pets, to give those pets a second chance. And we just really appreciate what she does. We've got a volunteer network that she coordinates, and they've been invaluable to the county in terms of raising funds and promoting awareness of the opportunities to adopt animals that are in shelters. She just plays such an honorable role. So if y'all wouldn't mind joining me in just congratulating her. And I will give her a hard time because she didn't look like it's possible she'd worked here 20 years. She looks like she might be 20, so that's a compliment. Our next recognition is a retirement. It is Ms. Tammy Connor. [S05] Canard. Canard, I'm sorry. We have Canards and Tanners. And we've done this before. Not for retirement, but for 20 years of service. You look so much more relaxed this time. But it's a pleasure to recognize Tammy this evening. She retired at the end of last calendar year, so what, last month? With 27 years of work in law enforcement, and she spent a lot of time with us, 20 years, in fact, at the detention center, but she also had stints with DJJ and Department of Corrections at the state level. She's spent her career dedicated to keeping inmates safe, keeping correctional officers safe, and the general public. And we just really appreciate all you've done. And, you know, it was definitely our loss and your gain. So, I mean, you gained a retirement. We've lost a very important member of our staff, and we understand. And we respect your decision, and we've got something for you. Just to remind you of how important you are to Newberry County. And if I could, this does open right. [S04] We signed it earlier. Okay, here we go. [S01] Move the show. Hopefully, it's something you, will remind you of your time here. Thank you for all that you've done, your service. All right, last but not least. [S01] That's enough. Chief? [S06] Yes, sir. It's been a pleasure. [S06] Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I was going to make a joke about too many chiefs and not enough workers. Former Chairman Johnson did not make the meeting. Two chiefs here. And the sheriff could have been here and I'm sure we could have come up with a couple more digits. You've been putting up with that for a long time. Well, it's my pleasure to recognize Chief Bowlen, Wesley Bowlen, for his retirement like Tammy. He retired at the end of last year, so that was last month after a very lengthy and distinguished career in law enforcement. You know, talking with the sheriff, the sheriff used the term that basically you were raised at the Sheriff's Department. He actually started with the department when he was in high school. He would do ride-alongs. I mean, he knew that a career in law enforcement is what he wanted. And then what I was really impressed, I didn't know this about you, but while he was going to the University of South Carolina, he not only worked part-time for the Sheriff's Department, but he actually joined full-time and would work weekends while taking a full load of classes. [S06] And driving over something. Yeah, incredibly difficult. That's just how dedicated he's been to the Sheriff's Department. You can imagine that he started much like all of our officers, where you started at the bottom and you worked your way up. You were, you know, investigator, you were supervisor, and then you made it to chief deputy, you know, in charge of the department, reporting to the sheriff. And there's so many accomplishments in your career, but one of them that stood out was the 800 mega herb system because that was a difficult, complex project. It was approved for funding from the capital project sales tax, which is, we've had five iterations of that, but it is a highly restricted source of money for building projects, and you're under a lot of scrutiny with it. And instead of having to contract many of the elements of that project out, Chief Bowlen handled it. And that's just something that he thrives with, you know, projects that are technical in nature and are complicated. And so you've developed this relationship and you maintain this, or I'm sorry, reputation. You maintain this reputation of being able to get jobs like that done. And I'm sure that that's played a large part in the next chapter of your working life. And so it's just a pleasure for me to recognize you for your long career and just to thank you for all you've done for Newberry County. It's been a pleasure working with you for two years. And we've got the certificate for you. Did I actually get it?
Yeah, I actually got it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Pleasure, Chairman.
Very special time in our meeting to recognize our employees and our retirees. Got classmate 10 years, proud of you, Ashley. Wesley, proud of you. Done a great job for Newberry County and will miss your service. All right, moving on, we have item number three, ordinance number 12-01-2024, an ordinance in Chapter 152 of the Code of Ordnances of the County of Newberry to adopt updated standards for the reduction of flood hazards. This is the third reading. Do I have a motion that this be third reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Fulmer. Any discussion? All in favor of this being the third reading? It is unanimous. All right, item number four is appointments. Does anyone have any appointments or reappointments? All right. Public comments. We have one signed up for public comments, Mr. Antoine Harris. Step to the podium and state your name.
Business? [S07] Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Antoine Harris. I am a public affairs specialist with the U.S. Small Business Administration, and I am, I cover the Midlands area. And so my job is to spread the good news about what we do as far as hurricane disaster recovery and what we have to offer. So I'll be quick and I'll give you the quick version. Just some quick stats for the state. We've had over 15,000, just about 15 and a half thousand applicants for disaster assistance throughout the state. We actually are pacing a little bit ahead of North Carolina. And if you think about Hurricane Helene, when it hit, if I could show you a map of the state, the western half of the state, if you could just go right down the middle, are all the counties that are affected. So we have about 29 within this disaster declaration. That is a presidential declaration again. And how that works is FEMA comes in, does an assessment, and then goes back to the president and says it meets the requirements for a declaration, and then he signs off on it. And when he does, or when the president does, we jump into action along with FEMA. So we've been side by side with them since late September. And this is my first time getting here to Newberry. So again, thank you for welcoming me. What we do is we offer disaster recovery loans, and I will email all of you the information. But what I'm asking is for you to just share this information with, you know, all of your constituents because people are still being affected by the storm. The more important thing is when I talk to the city of Newberry, the disaster declaration deadline to apply for anything was January 7th. We found out on January 5th that that has been extended to the 28th of January. So as of right now, anyone affected by Helene, any nonprofit business homeowner or renter is eligible to apply for aid either through the SBA and also through FEMA. I can't speak on behalf of FEMA, but, you know, obviously FEMA does grants. We do loans for various situations. And again, I'll get all this information to you. So the most important thing is January 28th is the deadline as of right now. If no questions for me, I do thank you for your time.
Thank you for the information. You've been appreciated. All we have signed up for public comments. Does anyone else wish to speak? You good? Okay. Make sure. Comments from the county administrator. Mr. Shaker?
You know, I think I'm good, too. Plus, you had to listen to me for an hour, so.
It was exciting. Always exciting.
I hate to prolong that, so thank you, though.
Thank you. All right, comments from council. We'll start to my left with Councilman Smith.
Thank you. Miss Wesley, Miss Tammy, thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Hate y'all retiring. Wish you the best, though. Best you the best on it. And like to thank Ms. Glass, Mr. Tesnier, and also Ms. Dennis for their time of service, too. Couldn't have done it without them, and it means a lot to us for the service. Also, I just want to remind everybody, Saturday, 2 o'clock, Martin Luther King Parade, if weather permit. Thank y'all. Appreciate you. That's all I have.
All right. Reverend Councilman Scurry?
We'd like to see our, I hate to see our young men and young ladies retire, but the job goes on. Thank for the time y'all spent here. Hope you enjoy the time you got left in the world. And we pray that we all be together as our new chairman and council. They went to the bat for us all, just having just now started years ago. And I appreciate that. And the unity together we have among all of us here tonight, we thank y'all for being part of us.
Absolutely, absolutely. Councilman Fulmer?
Yeah, definitely want to offer a sincere appreciation to all of our employees we honor tonight, especially those retiring. Chief Bowlen, I've known you a very long time. Have admired everything you have accomplished through the years. Anyway, I won't, I won't tell how long we have known each other because we will tell each other's age real quick. But you are, certainly will be missed, I'm sure, so without a doubt. But anyway, I personally wish you well in your future endeavors, for sure. So anyway, but like to encourage everybody to try to stay safe this coming week. We do have some predicted possible winter weather on the way next week, so be thinking about it. Don't get caught. If we do, encourage everybody to stay home if at all possible. So try to stay safe. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Sir, Councilman Reader?
Yeah, I'd just like to say to all the retirees, take a little time, enjoy yourself. Yeah, I know you've worked for many, many years, but try to enjoy yourself, enjoy your family, and take a little time to have a little fun. And everyone else, I'd like to say we appreciate the jobs that you're doing for the county of Newberry, and we hope you continue success. As Mr. Councilman Smith said earlier, we do have a Martin Luther King Day Parade on Saturday if weather permits, and also on Monday, we have a march from Miller Chapel AME Church to Bethlehem Baptist Church and a program at 10:00 a.m. And we have a young man that will be speaking. I'm sure all of you know him, Reverend Ben Pratt. And I hope he has the opportunity to talk to our youth because with the difficult times we're having with our youth who are truly confused at times, that they need a little guidance. So hopefully he will be able to give them a little guidance on Monday. Thank you.
Vice Chairman.
Just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, also to all the service that the county employees put in over the years, and to the retirees, getting able to spend all those years with the county, serving the county, doing good things for us. And now you get to go out there and enjoy it and your time away. And I know how it is when you retire, sometimes you, you start running out of projects to do. You think, or you say, I don't know how I did all this work before I was retired, you know, keeping up with your grass and all the different projects your wife puts on you. But thank you for coming out. Also, Jeff, good presentation to get tonight, going over land use plan, and keep up the good work. And everybody on council, keep up our good partnership and teamwork. That's how we keep it going. Thank you.
And I will echo all those remarks. I thank everyone for their service to the county, especially our retirees, Wesley. We've been together a long time with the co-op and the county officers. We appreciate all you've done. On that aspect, but to the whole county in general, you'll be missed. Our county employees are our county. That's what, that's what makes us up, so. Good people. All right, future meetings. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday, offices closed on January 20th. Newberry County Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting, January 30th. Public Safety and Courts Committee, January 27th at 5:00 p.m. Newberry County Council Work Session, February 5th at 5:00 p.m. And Newberry County Council Meeting, February 5th at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Scurry, second by Mr. Fulmer. All in favor? It is unanimous. We are adjourned.